Good evening, welcome to the November eighteenth regular meeting for Pasco Council. We have agendas available on the corner desk over there if you'd like to follow along, or a more detailed council packet is available through the city's website. We also televise our meetings live on Charter Cable as well as through the city's website and as well as Facebook Live. Those are available for review later on. If you have any cell phones, I would ask you to mute those so that the meeting isn't interrupted. And if you get a chance to speak with council, if you come to the podium and share your name with us, we'd appreciate knowing that for our record keeping. And with housekeeping taken care of, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alvarado.
Present.
Brajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
And Watkins.
And here. And with all of us here, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice.
Item three on the agenda is the consent agenda. We consider these items to be routine, I'll do them as a single roll call vote unless a member of the council or the member of the public would like something considered separately. Those items include the approval of minutes from the November fourth, two thousand nineteen meeting, bills and communications specifically to approve claims of the total amount of two million six hundred ninety-one thousand fifty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents and to approve bad debt write-off for utility billing, ambulance and other accounts in the amount of two hundred sixty-six thousand three hundred forty-three dollars and ninety-five cents, with a portion of that, one hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents to be turned over to collection. Includes item C, the two thousand twenty rate increase for basin disposal at about four percent. Item D, lift station improvements, specifically amendment with HDR professional services agreement in the amount of five hundred thirty thousand dollars, five hundred thirty thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars. Ambulance billing professional services contract to approve the ambulance billing professional services agreement with a company called System Design West LLC. And item F, transportation system master plan with DKS Associates. Those are the items on the consent agenda, anything to be removed? Hearing none, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
It's been moved, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Brajas, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Watkins.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Brajas.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Milney.
Yes.
Serrano.
Yes.
Seven, yes, it's unanimous, thank you for the consent agenda. Item four, proclamation and acknowledgements, none listed this evening, so we go to item five on the agenda, and if there's anybody here who wishes to speak on an item that's not further along on the agenda, this would be your opportunity. Mr. Robbins first, and then the gentleman behind, then.
Greetings, council members, this is our first time meeting together since the election, and what a consequential election it was. And I, I wanted to talk to the council and to say thank you, but there's one specific council member that we aren't going to see after December ninth, who's going to move on. This person's legacy is substantial, this person has been an inspiration, and this person has been one of the finest public servants that Pasco could ever ask for. That would be our current mayor, and if I get emotional, I do apologize because you've been one hell of a mentor, and you've set one heck of a standard for public service, and I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss the way you've conducted the meetings, I'm going to miss the ethical standards that you live your life by for all to see, I'm going to miss each and every time that you stood up for what you thought was right, and they don't make them like you anymore at a time when we've had politics that are so divisive that you look at local races and you think to yourself, oh my god, well what party does that person belong to? Which, which ideological spectrum produced that nutter butter? You were one of the first people I've ever seen in my thirty-two years of life that my first thought was, what a wonderful servant of the public, what a more trustworthy person could we find? So, I won't take any more time, I just wanted to tell you that you have simply been extraordinary, and I really am going to miss you, and god bless you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And going to get me going too, and I just let everybody know that our last meeting is intended to be December ninth, and I've, I know I'm inviting my mother to that evening, and I look forward to that being a tear-jerking emotional night, and I'll even cut to the chase of the end of it, a lot of the things that you want to talk about me, I think actually go directly to this community and the people that allow folks like us to be able to represent them, and it's, they're, it, it's not me, although by the way, it's maybe I'm a part of the whole thing, appreciate your thoughts.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And I was just going to make a note, I weren't in agreement with what you said, but I was going to keep it for three minutes, for you, Jay, thank you.
I knew you were timing, you were going to say, Mr. Mayor, three minutes.
It was, I'm just.
And you, sir, too.
Good evening, Pasco City Council, Isaiah Chong, I.S.A.I.A.H.C.H.O.N.G., Mr. Martinez, please give me a little more time because I do have two things I'd like to touch on. Firstly, I did not realize you were leaving, Mayor, and everything this gentleman said, I agree, in just thirty seconds of meeting you, I felt every single word he has described. So I am glad the city of Pasco has had you for the time they did. Now, I come before you because there's one concern, I've been here for a year and I've seen some problems, nothing really that urged me to speak to any of our legislators, but one thing I did notice is earlier, well rather last week, there was a woman that was hit on Burton Boulevard between Road seventy-six and sixty-eight. Earlier that day, I was in the area and noticed an elderly woman, I'd say probably seventy-ish, maybe eighties, struggling to get across the street after she got off the bus, and I see it happening frequently, this morning I went back there and I counted five from one bus going towards Richland and three coming towards Pasco, that were crossing. Why don't we have a crosswalk there, I really would like to see one somewhere between Walmart and Sonic, especially for our elderly people, our disabled people, our parents with strollers, are they supposed to walk all the way down to sixty-eight, cross, and then come all the way back up? For someone with a disability, it seems very, very disadvantageous, and I really implore this council to find something to do, I'm new to Washington, I'm not sure if it's a state matter, county, city, but I looked on the maps, it shows that it is within city limits, so I'm hoping that this council is able to work with the powers that be to get a crosswalk there ASAP. Maybe police, fire have a little something they can add to it, I'm not sure of the condition of the woman, but I pray to lord she survived and doesn't have much injuries, it could have been the eighty-year-old lady that was hit that day, and I definitely don't want to see it. Mayor, you were speaking of your mother being here, I really, really would like you to put your mother in that place, and I know that if there's one thing you could probably get done before you leave, it's that, people seem to like you around here, Mayor.
Well, actually.
So, I'm going to stop now because I could rant on for the next three minutes, so thank you very much.
Let me point out, we don't, we don't typically solve things with, with issues, but what I would note is that one of the things that we do in Pasco is follow very specific standards for traffic control vices and that sort of thing.
Of course.
I would ask that if you wanted to, and I have a feeling one of our staff members, the gentleman raising his hand, took some notes, if there's any chance you can share some contact information with him, I think he would probably follow up and share at least what our standards are.
Okay.
Why we do what we do, and/or whether or not that might be something for consideration.
Absolutely, thank you very much, thank you all for your time here, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else this evening? Hearing nobody, or nobody else, we're going to move on to the agenda, we'll go to item number six, reports from council members or officers, anybody at a meeting or event that they wish to share with council, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, last week was a busy week, as the third, third or second, I don't know, there's one week of my month that gets pretty jam-packed, but just to start off, I attended Benton Franklin Transit, their meeting, and there was a lot of public comment from, specifically from the union there, and just some, some things that you've probably seen on the news as well, but just in general, other than that, it's just trying to move forward the business of transporting people through our fine transportation system, and so just to know the need, there's also, just as far as public comments, there's just a lot of, as the gentleman had mentioned, just a lot of need for folks that are, you know, have mobility issues, and so it's always, it's always good to be reminded and to put ourselves in those places of like, what if I was elderly, if I was disabled, and so we heard a lot of comments like that as well. And then the day before, I was Benton, sorry, I was at Good Roads Association, and that's from Walla Walla, Benton and Franklin County, and we invited five legislators and see if they would come, and they all showed up, so we had five legislators at our, at our meeting, we had a lot of the local ones, I won't spend a lot of time saying who, but it was a really great turnout, and just a great conversation to talk about their legislative priorities that they have, but also some of the transportation projects that we really care about, and so we handed them our, our list that we came up with at Good Roads, and so it was a really productive meeting. And then on Friday, it was, which, which one did I do Friday, BF cog, and so for that one, I was just happy to report that we turned in all of our projects in time so that we should, we can get on their list to make sure we get some funding for some of the projects that qualify under their, their ability to fund. And just earlier today, I was at the Benton, what was it, I'm getting confused here, I went to the dog pound earlier today and had a, had a tour with, council member Torelli was there as well from Kennewick, and we're just talking about how, how we can come together and really solve some of the issues we have with our animals.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado, Mr. Maloney.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, on Thursday, I did attend the Election Impact Breakfast, which they were discussing the different things that will be affecting the states, different policies, it was a really good meeting, and then today, I also attended the Pasco Chamber Lunch, and we talked about the dams, and there will be a time in January, January thirteenth, actually, it's on a Monday to actually, it's a public workshop, and actually, I know the dams are extremely important, the four Snake River dams are basically vital to this community as far as making sure that we have jobs and low impact as far as low-cost electricity, but yeah, if those dams were out, I mean, you could see a lot of jobs going away, a lot of thing, I mean, our area would be heavily impacted, so to me, it's really important that so, as a community, we show up and keep our dams, so, thanks.
Ms. Brajas.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to report, add on to what Mr. Alvarado was saying regarding the animal shelter, they, it's, it's, it's very sad to see how the animals are, are being held there, the good thing that while the conversation with Jill, I believe it was her name, it's no longer a kill shelter, so it's, they do definitely need space, there's some work to be done there, Mr. Martinez was there as well, Jill, Jim Melbauer from Richland was there, Zara was there as well, so again, it's, it's something that I believe we should look into and see how we can support the animal shelter and work together with the other agencies, I know there's a plan in, in place or being considered, but like I said, it's something we should look into soon. That's all I have to share, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brajas, any other reports, Mr. Martinez?
I'll just share with that, I, I think it's well-known that the facility's been in a drastic need of attention for some time now, and in talking to Mr. Elect, Councilmember elect Mulberry, he was going to go back to his council, and I understand the other council member from Kennewick was there, so it's a good thing for everybody to see what's going on there so they can see the importance of, of this moving forward. And, and, but the one thing I want to say that's positive is I was really enlightened by the amount of people that were there to volunteer and walk the pets and do the things that they do for the animals, it's amazing, this country never ceases to amaze me with the people who are passionate about certain things, and, and it was, it was enlightening to see people in the, in the cat room, you know, entertaining the cats so that they can be around people so that when they go to their homes, you know, it's not unusual for them, so I want to encourage more people to do that, and, and I just wanted to, you know, leave it on a positive note, but I know we have, we have work to do, and hopefully within the next, in two thousand twenty, we can make a big stride in moving forward in that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. No other reports, we'll go on to the next one, and actually, I apologize, I didn't read, our agenda was a little bit different, and I just did this out of order, I'm doing six A now, and that is related to a presentation for Visit Tri-Cities Regional Sports Study, introductory, introductory comments by Mr. Rat Guy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, this evening, we have Visit Tri-Cities along with CH Johnson Consulting, about approximately a year ago, we partnered with the cities of Kennewick and Richland and Visit Tri-Cities to begin a study to evaluate sports tourism opportunities in the region. This included a market needs assessment and financial analysis, partially funded through the Hotel Motel Commission, and each of the three cities contributing a, a share to the study, and this evening, we're excited to bring out Visit Tri-Cities and CH Johnson to share the findings of that study with city council in a very Pasco-specific way, so I'll introduce Michael Novakovich from Visit Tri-Cities to kick things off.
Thank you, Zach, Mayor Watkins, council member, city staff, thank you for giving us some time this evening to talk to you about this sports market analysis and feasibility study that was done by CH Johnson, I'll introduce you here to Brandon and Colin, in just moments, I'll be sharing that study with you, we appreciate the collaboration, your support working with the city, and of course, our other city partners as we take a look at the entire region and what opportunities exist there so we can grow sports development, of course, it has significant economic impact, and when you look at total visitor spending, as I know you know, over half a billion dollars in visitor spending this last year, which can help build a thriving business climate, but it also, those dollars can help build out expanded and enhanced facilities for our residents to enjoy as well, and there's great opportunity here as we work together to look at how do we capitalize on synergies, other investments that are being made by your city partners and at projects that currently exist throughout the region, so, but I don't want to steal their thunder, I'd like to introduce Brandon and Colin from CH Johnson to enlighten you on what this study found.
Good evening.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, thank you all for allowing us to be here today, kind of give our results of a study that we've been working on for quite some time, and really doing a full, detailed market assessment, and working with Zach and Brent from, from your city as it relates to the Pasco portion of this, but as Michael had just described, really what we are looking at is more of a Tri-Cities regional approach, right, and understanding how do we collectively build the sports tourism sector here regionally, you know, while not stepping on each other's toes, and you know, maybe soccer makes sense, and does it make sense everywhere, or if it's an indoor, where does that, where's it most appropriate, things like that. And so, forgive me, I didn't quitely introduce myself, I am Brandon Dowling, principal with Johnson Consulting, and was the direct project manager on this project, and with me, I've, Colin Corain, you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Colin Corain, I was, am a project analyst on this project, I handle a lot of the day-to-day data and presented it to Brandon for him to, you know, make the ultimate conclusion and findings.
So I'm going to run through our slides that we prepared for you all, and then feel free to, you know, raise a hand if, if you guys want me to stop and dive in a little bit further on any of this, I'd be happy to do so. So we started our analysis with really doing a assessment of the, what we call primary, secondary, tertiary markets, so that's thirty minutes, hour and a half, and four-hour drive times, and you may ask why, what defines that, and that's more of on a national level, what we've learned is mom and dad don't want to drive further than thirty minutes on a Monday through Thursday for practice, so that thirty minutes is really becomes a critical component to really assess the overall viabilities of these types of venues, because that Monday through Thursday programming is what really helps me, you know, financially stable operations. The second hour and a half and four hours is really something of regional and more national competition for, for those tournaments that we'll talk about here shortly. So again, in looking at, you know, some of the key characteristics that we look at, we look at both, you know, household income, population, population growth, to really understand, you know, what does it look like, not only presently and historically, but moving forward, you know, and as you could see, just in general, as it relates to the overall Tri-Cities marketplace, the rates continue to grow, and particularly, you know, for Pasco, you know, I think you guys are outpacing and in line with Richland, slightly above Kennewick as it relates to projected population growth, which is an important key to the overall, you know, pipeline, if you will, for operations of a facility of this nature. Another critical component to the success of a sports tourism facility is understanding the support infrastructure that is in and around that facility, i.e. hotels, right, if you're hosting a large tournament with families coming to your town and staying for the weekend, there needs to be enough supported hotels in and around and nearby, generally within a rule of thumb, on a national level, from a lot of the rights holders, is about fifteen minutes, parents don't want to drive any further than that to stay for the week. So again, from a, you know, the overall infrastructure, Pasco is the, has the fewest number of hotels, but it will get into kind of why we decided the site, and, and really a lot of the sites that we've picked for each of the other two facilities as well was driven by where the hotel infrastructure clusters are, to really kind of understand how do we best leverage what we currently have. So this is just a high-level map of, you know, the density of hotels within the community and where they lie, obviously, you could see a concentration near the airport. Which, by the way, I'm both happy and sad to find out that you guys will have an hour direct to Chicago, we're based out of Chicago, coming here soon, so we had a stop in Minneapolis, and I would really enjoy the, the direct, so, kudos. So, sports tourism, the population and its trends, I mean, it's a, it's a fifteen-billion-dollar industry, I don't like to use the coin, recession-proof, a lot of folks do, I say it's recession-tested, you know, it's been one of the few industries that has grown throughout the recession, and what we've found is that's directly attributed to mom and dad not willing to cut back spending on, on the children, so there may not be a, an additional vacation this year, but they're turning, you know, John and, and brother and sister's tournament into a vacation, if you will, and staying there for the weekend, and that's really what's attributed to growth in this industry. These are just some high-level participations by sports, and what we looked at from, you know, both core and casual participation, so that's both more regularly played or played once or twice a year, to really assess, you know, what are the participation levels both in Pasco as well as, you know, as it relates to the nation. This is supposed to be an interactive map that kind of show that growth and boom, if you will, in, in sports tourism-type developments, this is just a quick frozen snapshot of two thousand, and what I can share is in two thousand nineteen presently, you'll see quite a few more in the southeast as well as Midwest, however, the, you know, the, the real gap in the marketplace is the western half of the US, and so we, we are certainly bullish on that opportunity as the further west you get of the Midwest area for these types of facilities. Colin, you want to talk about the local audits?
Uh, yes, so we look, we did a local and regional audit of facilities in Kennewick, Pasco, and Richland, and we did basketball volleyball complexes, ice complexes, baseball, softball, and then outdoor multipurpose, which is soccer, rugby, lacrosse, those kinds of sports. And with that, the only one that we found within Pasco was the TCYSA Soccer Complex, which has seventeen full field, or full turf, or grass fields, and with that, the requirements to, the requirements for a tournament quality facility are presented on the right as well, greater than ten fields for a outdoor multipurpose, which is why there's only one.
And I'll, and I'll just add to that, you know, one of the reasons why these, these programings are driven is the, their, their opportunity to host larger number of teams, right, and so a threshold is ten, because you know, anything under ten, you're really not going to get that needle moving, if you will, from a tourism standpoint, and so that's kind of where we draw those thresholds for each of those outdoor and indoor components. So, just talking to that, those same regional, so we looked at both, you know, the, the primary, secondary, tertiary markets to really understand what's the competition within that, that area, you know, and as you'll note, really, the only one from a soccer standpoint is Sozo, which we actually happen to work on as well in Yakima, if anyone's familiar with that. And then there's a, there's a baseball softball field within that hour and a half, so as it relates to terminate quality and size-type facilities, there really isn't much within the, you know, the hour and a half drive time, which to us tells us there's an opportunity here that's not being met from a facility standpoint. This goes into our site analysis, the site that we visited in particular to Pasco, obviously the existing facilities at TCYSA and Track, as well as the Road Forty-Eight and the A Street Sports Complex, again, these were all looking at pieces of land and where there may be an opportunity for new development, or, you know, is there an opportunity to better leverage what we have existing? Our recommended site was the TCYSA, and for reasons why we specifically stated it earlier as it relates to, it is probably the preeminent terminate quality facility in all the Tri-Cities right now presently. At seventeen fields, you guys are one of the largest, you know, within the state as well, you know, competitive to Sozo, it's all natural, which is, you know, you gotta, there's two different contingents on whether national or synthetic, however, as it relates to tourism and utilization, we would certainly recommend synthetic, and so we'll get into that a little bit as a part of our recommendations, so for our recommendations in Pasco, we recommend perhaps taking some of those natural and turn them into synthetic, and the reason behind that is to help increase utilization, you know, it takes too much to keep these upkeep at, at the rate of which you would like to use them if you're, if you're hosting those regional and national tournaments that, that you ought to be at that size. As well as some lights and some concessions and restrooms, those are all kind of those custom amenities, if you will, of these types of facilities that would allow you to compete, again, with the regional soccer complexes throughout the Washington. And one of the things I didn't notice is we recommend the public model, and, and certainly we, we, you know, in working with Zach and Brent, we understand the, the current agreement you all have with the youth organization and their use of it, it is our, our opinion that there could be some more tournament-driven programming through there, in our understanding, it's really kind of a, a use of the, the local team itself, or organization, and so if it was publicly operated, there would be better chance of kind of controlling the overall schedule, and what we, what we lend it to the conversation is, is perhaps as you guys are starting to revisit the, the agreement and how that looks, maybe there's some more public dates that'll allow you all to kind of market that facility at a more grander level to really bring some of those, you know, increased visitation from some of those regional tournaments that are not happening right now. So with that, we've kind of put together what we would envision a, a facility of this size, based on our experience in comparable facilities, both nationally and regionally, as it relates to events, and we've broken that down by event types, both leagues, tournaments, camps, clinics, for not only soccer, but there's a, a fairly growing contingent of lacrosse and rugby, one thing I was missing in stating at the very beginning of this is not only a meeting with the local city leaders, but also meeting with the local sports organizations, from be it soccer, rugby, football, lacrosse, judo, basketball, volleyball, we were here for about three days, meeting with those individual sports organizations to really understand what are they seeing in the marketplace, and whether their needs and if they're being met. So stepping back, you know, and again, you'll, you may note, with these, we always do generally a ramp-up period, right, because it takes a little bit of time, and some of these larger tournaments are booked two years out in advance, and so we have, you know, at thirty-nine events in year one, and really, year five stabilization would be seventy-one events, and again, so from a total visitation standpoint, we're projecting just north of fifty thousand folks or visitors to the community participating, the number of events and demands that we've presented, that would equate to about eight regional tournaments. From there, so we put together what the operating model may look like, given if those demand numbers were the case and it would be publicly managed, again, you'll see it grow from year one to year five, and year five being net stabilization, you know, primary rental stream is obviously the, the number one revenue source in these types of venues, advertising quickly following behind that, depending on the, the level of concessions that you all would put there as part of those recommendations we made, there, there may be some additional dollars from that, and then, you know, the, the operation cost that we've put together is really from comparable facilities that we've worked on nationally. So as you could see, in year one, there would be some lost dollars, and by year three, probably getting closer to breaking even, and, and year four, you'll note, we start to account for what we call reserve for replacement, which is about five percent of total revenues, and again, this is for, you know, replacing those, those turf after a ten- to fifteen-year period when the, the lifespan of those have worn, additional lights, concessions, any major improvements that you guys need, you're continuing to, to fund a balance, if you will, or a reserve for replacement that, that will allow you to do so. From here, our next and final step was really understanding, you know, what is the, the overall potential cost, so again, putting those, those eight to ten fields, and again, these are really high-level, rough-armed magnitude construction dollars, we would Uh, we would certainly recommend if this is something you are looking into doing further, uh we'd bring in, you know, architect and a, and a cost estimator to really hone in on what the actual cost may be. Uh but through our experience, uh generally uh synthetic is about seven fifty, uh give or take, maybe seven fifty to a million a, a field. Uh so we've applied a nine million dollar budget for you all and, and per our recommendations. Um, so as you could see with that nine million, there'd be a one, a one-time economic and fiscal impact analysis or, or, or benefit rather. Um, and, and increased total spending here about five point five million and then the uh overall fiscal impact would be about four hundred and seventy thousand. And that's just a one-time construction impact. More of the annual impacts and again, what you're seeing on the bottom right of our screen is uh, you know, that's the, all the visitors, that's the, the origin of visitors. So really looking at the, the ones that are staying overnight and how much they're spending. Uh so that on average, every digit spent of an overnight visitor is about a hundred and sixty-six dollars. That attributes to about uh six point three million dollars by year five. Uh and those are annual economic and fiscal impact numbers. Um, which also equates to fifty-six full-time equivalent jobs. Uh some of those may be at this facility and some of those are, you know, caused by the, the developments itself, right? Uh you have to bring on additional waitstaff at the local restaurant because there's more people there. Um, those all count towards what that job count is. Um, and then, you know, from an overall total estimated room night, we're projecting about seven thousand six hundred. Um, and again, that was uh really the all goal in looking at all of this to really understand, you know, how, how can we increase sports tourism here? Uh and in our mind and our judgment, our experience, um better um, you know, being able to leverage your guys' existing assets in TC YSA. And, and, and allowing it to be more utilized with synthetic turf um would allow you all to achieve this. Any questions?
And that's a fo- is focus uh on Pasco part and you also mentioned too that there are other communities that have, you're, you're presenting other communities for other asks as well.
That is correct.
So this is in context of a larger tri-cities tourism thing and this is one of the very specific and tangible things that Pasco could do to help that bigger tri-city complexion.
That's exactly correct, Mayor. Yep.
Okay. Uh questions, discussion, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you so much for the presentation. Um, you know, one thing I, I really appreciate in, in your last slide, there was that, that clear reminder that um. That, that the dollars that local government spend are invested in, in the community, also for the, it's labor in the community, it's people that are gonna, gonna do that. So I, I really appreciate that, um the way you succinctly added in there the simp- the, the simple realization that, yeah, the money that we spend is for jobs that are local too. So um I appreciate that. Um, so I do have two questions and um one ties into exactly what um what the mayor was saying just a moment ago. Um, could you give me a little preview into what the other cities or we waiting for the big reveal until everyone's been?
It's top secret. No. Um, yeah, no, so.
I don't want to, I don't want to spoil anything.
Yeah, yeah, just general. So um for, for Kennewick, uh we're recommending an indoor uh multipurpose that would be geared towards more basketball volleyball. Um, that would also include a, a additional sheet of ice. Um, and the recommended site with that would be uh near Toyota Center to leverage the, to two sheets there already. Um, and so that's, you know, again, that's, that we think could be their niche. Uh and there's multiple reasons for the indoor component could better leverage with the convention center and things like that. Um, and then in, in Richland, it's uh, it's a more baseball softball, so two wheels, if you will, so eight diamonds as well as uh. Uh some additional uh soccer lacrosse fields as well uh there. I forget the number. We have six to eight maybe perhaps, I believe. Yeah, for, for Richmond. So that's basically the three recommendations. Um, you know, and. Uh it came up in one of our discussions before too, so I just kind of share that as well as we certainly think. Uh that there's appetite for that number of, of soccer lacrosse fields here in the greater marketplace. So there, we don't think that there's going to be any cannibalization of, of each other. It's um actually, we think it could be supplemental, um you know, in nature and, and perhaps maybe even help you all lower some larger events, um given that the adjacencies of them, so.
Great. Thanks for that little, little preview because I was of course very curious. Um, you know, a lot of us are very, obviously we, we think of it as ourselves in terms of a region, not just one city standalone, right?
Sure.
So um appreciate that additional insight. And, and the last thing I had um is. I was surprised to hear that there wasn't any discussion of any swimming competitions or other sort of aquatics um, um activities. I know that we've heard from the, from community members repeatedly that they, that some advocates think very strongly that there'd be a. Massive demand in market for a competitive swimming pool year-round indoor facility, that sort of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I was, I was kind of surprised to see, you know, lacrosse and some others, but no, no, no discussion about that. Is that something you evaluated and uh could you?
Yeah, yeah, we did a, a high level evaluation on that, I would say. Um, it did come up early on in one of our, I think we had competitive swim at one of those initial, the, the meetings I had recommend, uh some, uh. I told you about. Um, one of the things as it relates to those regional nad- natoriums, especially ones of com- of competition level. Um, are oftentimes are, are extremely difficult and cost prohibitive from an operational standpoint. Um, that uh it's return on investment, although you, you'd be able to host some meets and some larger regional meets. May not be that same economic benefit um as we would see on a, on a soccer um lacrosse. So in our opinion, the, the needle moves further on a soccer lacrosse as opposed to a, an natorium.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other discussion? Mr. Serrano?
Thank you, and I appreciate the presentation. Um, s- since you mentioned Richland, are you recommending uh turf? On the baseball softball? Good. I mean, that'd be nice to see that here. Um, anyway, I have my own grip. So, but as far as how you determine the turf uh on the soccer fields you're recommending would sell, however you want to call it better, would book better? Than the natural grass? Can you kind of talk your process through figuring out, you know, who would book one versus the other or what a thought process is?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. Um, and because there was some thought on, on, you know, how do we, do we want to do it all or, or should we do half? And, and the real, the real, the realization is why we landed on the half is um. We think the appetite and that the growth in demand in lacrosse here regionally is going to start to pick up even more than it is already. Um, and you know, and I don't know if there's any lacrosse fans in here, but they can, they can beat up a field pretty good um from a synthetic standpoint. And so they have mats and stuff like that. They can prohibit that a little bit. Um, but we would encourage that to be the natural grass side, if you will. Um, but the real reason, uh and another reason, I guess, to add on to that, why we'd only go to half is to really kind of understand. You know, is that utilization coming in from the wear and tear on it and are we getting that cost savings, that kind of almost a phase of development, if you will, right? It's the testing the market.
Mr. Martinez?
Thank you. And I don't know how, how to even pretty ask this question, but if you had both synthetic and then you had natural. Um, there would obviously be a price difference in using the two, correct?
Yes.
And then my concern would be, you know, will they just use mainly want to use the natural because, and I, and I don't know the question, but. Would, would the natural be overused and the synthetic not be used therefore delaying the return on investment more? What, what was your thought on that? Or will more people, or, or will more organizations and teams just go strictly to the synthetic because that's just kind of better to play on?
Yeah, I, I think you'll, you'll find naturally a lot of your soccer teams will probably want to move over that just from a, and again, I think. That the synthetic, especially with the lights will allow for longer usage, so earlier in the morning, later at night. Um, a- and, and so what we've seen in other places is, is that natural crossover that folks will probably want that synthetic, right? And so that's part of the um management of it, if you will, i- is understanding, you know, do we have enough capacity? On the non-synthetic or is everyone just basically going after synthetic and then that is going to be dictated by price then, right? Then you have to understand what the pricing capacity would be on that. Uh, we have a variance in price. It's very minimal at the time. Uh, and Colin, you may have that top of your head, what we price for synthetic versus natural?
Uh, yes, so it's thirty-five for um natural, forty-five for synthetic, and then an additional fifteen an hour for lights.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one of the plans that we have uh for, for our cities to build uh some soccer complexes on A Street. And I know that's one of the sites that was kind of l- looked at as far as a recommendation from your end. Um, and I'm just curious, uh is there uh perhaps models or uh places where they have uh complexes that are multi-site? Uh, I know for, for instance, AAU, uh they go through various uh locally, they go to various places because, you know, the, the, there's. Mu- so much demand that there's not enough gyms. And so I'm just curious if uh for a regional uh perspective, if there's anything like that, that uh that um. Would uh per- perhaps would that deter folks from coming to uh to a tournament in Pasco if it was a multi-site kind of complex?
Yeah, yeah, so uh you kind of hit right on the head on the latter, latter part of that. That, that's the, the, the advantage of what you guys have right now presently at all those at one location is, is significant. That you don't really get that in a lot of communities because oftentimes communities do have to do the bundling where, you know, ten minutes over, ten minutes this way, you get about five, ten minutes this way, you get about four. And collectively, we have nine. Um, and so now when you have that density at all in one location, mom and dad only have to park once and sit there and set up there for the day with, what have you. Um, it becomes a more of a sales package, right? Because you're, you're competing against the region and, and you know, how, you know, how, why should we go to your facility if there's soccer tournament somewhere else and, and I. And have it all in one place, right? And uh another key component of that that I mentioned earlier was, is the hotels. Uh, you know, if you have all that and there's no hotels around. Um, it becomes a challenge uh because then, you know, mom and dad don't know how far they have to travel to get to that one place, if you will. So it's, you're, you're selling a, a, a package. It's more than the facility itself, I guess, is the best way to put it because. It's this experience that you're selling. You're, you're experiencing Pasco, you're experiencing what we have from a facility and everything to do in and around it. So part of this is working with Visit Tri-Cities and putting that package and making sure they're going to all of your community events, uh your local vendors that, that, if you will. Uh, that really creates that experience that makes them want to come back and, and play that soccer tournament, lacrosse tournament, if you will.
And with that, I know you mentioned AAU basketball. They are more inclined to kind of jump around gyms just because there's not as many facilities in the market.
I appreciate the presentation. I, I was a little disappointed that uh um we did not have the Pascal High dancers here today, but that's all right. Thank you.
And, and I'm remembering so being the guy who's going to be done at the end of the year and I'm looking around the room and. If I had Stan, I'm sure he'd know the answer to this, but if we go back fifteen plus years ago, what I remember is either. There, there was something, the magic kid that happened that either, and maybe Saul will help here too, uh that the soccer interests in Pasco. Built the critical mass that we have in and around probably the same time and/or some deliberate efforts by Visitor Convention Bureau. To do sports marketing in the tri-cities and that might have been a case of just taking advantage of the assets that are available. So I'm, I'm thinking about the mechanism and Visitor Convention Bureau clearly doesn't have the resources to go build new facilities. I think it has the ability to harness and ask its constituent groups to try and build their portion of it. And then maybe that's just, maybe that's just enough, but I have a feeling it was probably a little bit more complex than that fifteen years ago. We're in our state because of some deliberateness, so if, if there are some memories that can be resolved or re- remembered. And/or, and I make the suggestion that if Pasco's component is, because this is going to be dollars to, to add more facilities. That's probably a great thing for this group to talk about as whether or not it's a council goal or what level of goal one could do in a couple of years. And, and I would, and if that's, if that's the way, and I see a couple nods because I think that'd be a good thing to do. Mr. Ratkai, I maybe would agree, uh maybe a position paper or, you know, white paper on, on something like that would be helpful. Uh, and if the council wanted to grab hold of it, because this would be a multi-year effort for us to add amenities. And I think also hit upon the point that we're still short on soccer facilities in Pasco because of a variety of other things. So marshaling all those resources so they're efficient and tick the boxes for local use, growing the, the sports. And sports marketing for tourism and all that. Uh, I would imagine uh, uh be a coordinated effort. Mr. Ratkai, thoughts?
Yeah, that's certainly, Mr. Mayor. We were happy to prepare a position paper, white paper on the topic. Uh, I think one of the things as we talk about the, the, the current effort. And the regional impact of this as well is we're very thankful for Visit Tri-Cities to take the lead on this as well as uh our cooperative uh, uh cities here in the tri-cities. To really help because this is a, a, a pretty significant study that Recreation Services and I've looked at, but it'd also help us. As we look to the next couple of years to help guide and master plan that facility. We've got the data to back it up as far as tourism dollars. And this will help us as we look at our, and you know, overall capital spending as well as uh the parks uh master planning in the future. So this is definitely into consideration and we appreciate the backup uh data on this and uh we're more than happy to cap, capture that in a uh. Uh, brief white paper for the council.
And, and just to mention to you, in the back of the room, we have a set of council goals and that typically is done every couple of years. And it's timely in that that process uh, uh is going to begin, it's already, it is beginning with some survey stuff we do. And uh this, this group uh in, in the new year will sit and figure out what it wants to do for big goals in the next couple of years. Personally, I'd hope you to have a goal related to this question uh on, on there and probably with uh your help and the Visitor Convention Bureau's help, that might be able to be, to happen. Mr. Alvarado?
Just a quick question for Mr. Ratkai. Um, so uh were we to go in this uh direction of uh putting resources towards this, would this uh have any impact on uh our current plans for A Street?
Uh, no, current plans for A Street are going to be take, unfolding just as we have uh presented up through the capital improvement study as well as uh. The work that we're doing to make sure that the RCO grant is fulfilled and soccer and sports field needs are, are, are established in East Pasco. So there's going to be no change to the A Street plans in light of this.
But, but is it also fair to say too that if we have a net increase in soccer fields, that gives flexibility to the city uh, uh for programming of soccer?
Yes, and that's a big uh consideration with the current facilities that we have is working with our youth soccer organizations. We do have adult soccer leagues. And looking at availability of fields uh which people can use it. We also have to look at um our maintenance. How, how worn out the fields are because they are natural grass instead of turf. And um the addition of facilities in A Street will help uh not just locally within the city of Pasco or regionally to tri-cities for both practice facilities of all ages.
And as you noted and you probably saw in here, we've about to add three or four, but room for ten-ish or eight-ish. So uh we're, 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 we're still on behind on soccer facilities, obviously. Mr. Serrano?
Just one quick question more geared to city staff. Um, I recall at one point. Either earlier this year or late last year, we were talking about a multi-sport complex off-road one hundred. I want to say off Burns and one hundred, either that or closer to the river and one hundred. Is that still in the works at all? And I believe that was going to be potentially privately funded. We might have been, it might have been a land use decision that we made.
Yeah, there, I think there was, there was uh one of the soccer associations were going to buy a piece right at Burns and one hundred and I. Think that's fallen too. That was, that was privately funded, but uh they'd come in for some sort of uh rezone uh regarding the property.
Okay, thank you. I, I just remember it struck a chord that it was not quite this scale, but close and. You know, I just wouldn't want to push a private business out if, if they're already looking at that, but since I hadn't heard anything, probably good, timely to talk about it. Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation and appreciate the, this uh information that tourism as an element in Pasco is fully on board with. And we want to, want to keep growing that and it's nice to, it's nice to have. To be, to be the one in the market that's in a good spot and, and care and feeding to that is probably important for us. So appreciate you. I'll kind of keep an update on that. No other matters on that. We thank you for the presentation and we're going to move on with the agenda. Any other, any other?
No, I was just going to thank, thank you all again for your time. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on with our business meeting and we go on to section seven, no hearings and council actions on ordinances relating there too. So we go to uh section eight, ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings. The item we've talked about a couple of times related, or at least once related to a limited tax general obligation bond. Talked about it length uh last week. Uh, any significant updates since last week, Ms. Igdel?
Uh, no updates, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, questions or uh would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and buckle up, Mrs. Longland. I move to adopt ordinance number four, four, seven, zero relating to contracting indebtedness. Providing for the issuance, sale and delivery of not to exceed twenty-three million dollars of aggregate principal amount of limited tax general obligation bonds. To provide funds to design, construct and equip uh replacement fire stations for station number eighty-three and station number eighty-four. A regional animal shelter facility, improvements to Geese Stadium and other capital purposes as deemed necessary and advisable by the city. And to pay the costs of issuance and sale of bonds. Fixing or setting parameters with respect to certain terms and covenants with, of the bonds. Appoint, appointing the city's designated representative to approve the final terms of the sale of the bonds and providing for other related matters. And further authorized publication by summary only.
Uh, second by Mr. P- Martinez and good job, Mr. Maloney, when they're twenty-four, mi- twenty-three million dollar bonds, they are important to say, right? So appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, discussion on this. I'm starting, I'd ask. Uh, what uh interest rate would we be getting or is that, would that be figured out yet?
We're not sure at this point. We're looking at uh low threes. Uh, I'm fairly confident that we will get the interest rates below three point five or maybe even closer to three percent.
Mr. Maloney, did you need the floor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, yeah, just wanted to say that, you know, this is, this is a great tie-in to that conversation we had earlier about a new animal control facility. Um, it's great to identify the need and this this bond is actually getting the funding to pay our portion of it. So this really does come full circle and we do listen and we are working hard on these things and this is just one of those components of how to, how to run a, run a city smart, so appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, uh, gotta ask for your vote on this one and this one's, uh, gonna be a voice vote. And gotta get back my thing jumped around here, all those in favor of ordinance four, four, seven, zero, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carries unanimously. And with that, we will have a bond and hopefully in the, uh, low threes and we'll find out, uh, when will we find out, I was missing that what our rate was?
Uh, uh, the sale of the bond is scheduled at this point for December eleventh and we do have some due diligence calls, uh, next week, I believe.
Great. With that, we'll go on to the next item and that's related to an item we talked about also last week, uh, related to fireworks ordinance update from, uh. Uh, principally from our, uh, suggested by our police department. Uh, any updates? And I note that we have a brand, uh, uh, new deputy chief and good, uh, good to see you here this evening. And, uh, I'm guessing if Chief Rosky, uh, put through the fire, he didn't, he didn't, he told you we weren't gonna ask any questions, is my guess.
That's right.
Deputy Chief Cook. But that said, any questions of Deputy Chief Cook, just since we got him here? How about a motion, Mr. Maloney, or or Mr. Oh, I, Mr. Zabel?
I did wa- I did want to give just one quick update, uh, last week, I think the question, uh, as a result of the discussion on the housekeeping changes. And the fee amount, there was a question on, um, the overcharge that our prior, that our current ordinance, uh, provided for. And so once this is passed, we'll go back and reimburse, uh, the thirty dollars for the four licensees from last year.
Thanks for the housekeeping. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four, four, seven, one, admitting sections five dot ninety-six dot one, zero, one, zero, uh, license required. Uh, section five dot ninety-six dot oh, three, oh, permit fee, section five dot nine-six dot oh, four, oh, term of license. Section five dot nine-six dot zero, seven, zero, timing for filing of application. Section five dot ninety-six dot zero, eight, zero, fireworks sale requirements. And three dot thirty-five dot oh, five, oh, business licenses of this Pasco municipal code and further authorized publication by summary only.
It's been moved, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Brahas, any discussion on this item? Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. I know last week, um, a lot of our conversations centered around the Fourth of July, but we also allow for fireworks, uh, the week. You know, twenty-seventh through the thirty-first of December, uh, do you foresee any impact to sales potentially this year? Uh, has has there been any pulsing from the community or expressed interest in utilizing these additional permits? I don't know, just looking to my right.
Yeah, we've, we've not, yeah, it's, it, yeah, the New Year's Eve follow, celebration doesn't seem to be quite as big one.
Yeah, I know it's not the same, but.
Leftover fireworks versus purchasing new ones.
Right.
Mostly worried about buckshot.
I recognize, you know, I just wanted to recognize that we, we spent the significant bulk and I don't think we even mentioned that these are legal. The twenty-seventh through the thirty-first, so I think to the extent that we make this a comment to the public that yes. When your neighbors light them off twenty-seventh through the thirty-first, depending on the time, they are legal. Uh, we need to recognize that and then also if there are gonna be potentially more sales, we should also be prepared for that.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano, any other thoughts? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance four, four, seven, one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carries unanimously. And with that, another item we also talked about, uh, several times, uh, creation of an arts and culture commission. I would just ask if there are any updates since last week, Mr. Zabel?
None, Your Honor.
With that, we have an ordinance in front of us, somebody interested in making a motion, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number four, four, seven, two, establishing an arts and culture commission.
It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Alvarado was quick on that, um, uh, any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carries unanimously and now staff get to expand, make another webpage and hopefully we've got some good applicants. Uh, in the spring for one more commission to, uh, come up with some volunteers for. So good job on Pasco and and, uh, look forward to seeing the, seeing how that works out. With that, we go to an item D, which is, I believe marked with an asterisk, so technically new, uh, purchase and sale agreement for a purchase of future parkland. Mr. Ratkai?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, over the past couple of years, the city and the Pasco School District have been in discussion about developing a joint school grounds slash park facility. The intent of which is to really allow for significant savings for both agencies in terms of property acquisition, capital outlay and maintenance and upkeep. All of which which benefits the taxpayers and community members that use this facility. The current project is adjacent to the newly opened Three Rivers Elementary School located at the intersection of Road fifty and Massey Drive. Late in the summer of twenty nineteen or this year, um, the Pasco School District had placed the property on surplus and, um. Have made it ready for sale to the city of Pasco. Uh, staff recommends the purchase of the easterly five acres of the PSD property, you can see it's, uh, shaded in green on the visuals on the screen. Um, to develop a neighborhood park in the rapidly developing Chapel Hill Boulevard area, which was formerly owned by the Department of Natural Resources. If approved, the construction is anticipated to be, uh, in late summer, early fall of twenty twenty with completion by the spring of twenty twenty-one. For the provisions of the proposed and attached purchase and sale agreement, the specific roles, uh, for the development and maintenance are as follows. Uh, the city would develop the five acres that we would purchase, uh, shaded in green, the Pasco School District. They've already developed and opened the school, they'd be developing the the rest of the area. Um, the school district will maintain all turf, trees and plant materials as well as provide irrigation, monitoring and repairs, mowing, fertilization, weed control and general upkeep. City will maintain any trees on its five acres, it will provide trash pickup, maintain pathways, provide and maintain play structures, fountains, tables, shade structures. Anything that we would construct on the, on the five acres would be our responsibility. Each party would pay irrigation expenses in proportion to their respective, uh, share of total land ownership. The design of this property has not occurred since we don't own it yet, so that'll be forthcoming. Um, should the resolution authorizing execution of this PSA be approved this evening, closing on this property is expected to occur before the end of the year. Um, the exact schedule for closing and processing of payment would be developing over the next couple of weeks, uh, in conjunction with, uh, the school district. Basic rundown of this, um, it's allocated within the budget for purchase as well as within the, uh, capital improvement plan. That we've, uh, recently approved, so I'll take any questions of council at this time.
Uh, and with this expectation, if it's, uh, do use for park purposes, is it anticipated that would become the neighborhood park? Uh, for all, uh, all the stuff between there and say sixty-eight in that development? Or is there, is that's, that's a pretty big chunk, would there be, how would this fit into the complexion of that, of the larger DNR property?
It would be considered a neighborhood park for that area, the exact perimeters of that area, I'd have to, uh, confirm with our park staff. Um, in order to bring that back to council, but yes, this would serve that, um, neighborhood type purpose.
Mr. Maloney?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I move to approve resolution number three, nine, two, zero, approving the purchase and sale agreement with the Pasco School District for the future parkland. Adjacent to Three Rivers Elementary School and further authorize the city manager to sign and execute the purchase and sale agreement.
It's been moved and seconded, or moved, is there, thank you for the second, Mr. Serrano. Uh, discussion, uh, Mr. Alvarado?
Just have a question of curiosity, having been in the planning commission for a, a, a little bit, um, so, uh, I guess it's about more for, uh, Mr. White. And so when we select, uh, parks and where we're gonna, you know, place parks and things like that and how much do we, um. Um, I don't wanna save time, but, uh, uh, what's the, uh, connection to in in to, uh, as it pertains to the, uh, outline neighborhoods that are around it? As far as Eastman and being able to walk through it, or is, um, I guess what's the order in in which we select those sites? And we, uh, make sure that the flats are appropriate and we, uh, promote walkability to these parks? I don't know if they have a system for that.
Yeah, I'm, we, we may have to check and get back to council on the exact figure, but it's roughly a half a mile. And, um, if council recalls, actually, the DNR property is, the residential portion was only about two hundred and fifty acres. So it might, this might be the DNR property's neighborhood park.
Cause it, if our DNR property over on the eastern side is potentially more commercial, so if I'm looking to where this red area is. Shifted to the left of the center of that, but it may be closer to the middle of it if you figure just.
And the, and the adjacent residential both to the west and to the northwest, uh, which is significant. And then, uh, uh, staff has been operating under a long, long time, uh, policy, uh, target. Of cooperating, uh, with the school district for partnering with the adjacent school and park sites because you get more bang for your buck essentially.
And and I would note too that actually Liberty Park that's in the green, light green below the I and Chapel Hill down near the canal. It, I believe, is a half mile to the left edge of the red area because, uh, because I happen to live in that in neighborhood. So in this case, this would be a case that would be less than a half mile with the new park, uh, would be the walking distance at least from an east to west perspective. Uh, if not, uh, maybe from the, some of the people, yeah, it would, it would probably be a little bit lesser than a half, less than a half mile.
And just so, so means a comment would be, um, I I haven't been through that side, I don't know what that plat looks like. I I've noticed, uh, certain parks, uh, in the tri-cities have, uh, you know, neighborhoods with walls to them or things of that nature that, you know. It's just a kind of, it seems like a waste that people have to drive to these parks and, you know, the people who live nearby can just walk. But they have to go around all these very complicated cul-de-sacs and, um, so that that's just more of a comment.
Uh, in in, I think your point about, I think of the term as estate fences, there are, there is an estate fence. Around that big subdivision to the left around the perimeter of it and presumably there would be estate fencing. You see the individual lots, uh, on this, on the drawing that are just to the south of the school and the proposed park. Uh, there would potentially be, uh, s- uh, state fence in between there because that's canal just to the south of those, which makes sense. But, uh, it would, but there wouldn't be, there'd be less houses down that way anyway. Um, I have local knowledge, so, uh, Mr. Martinez and then Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm definitely gonna be voting in favor of this purchase, I, I just wanna highlight the efficiency. Uh, and being on the Parks and Rec Board at one time, Mr. Maloney is on it now, but, um. These things are strategic to make sure that we, we, uh, uh, we have standards that we wanna meet to make sure we have these parks. Uh, in in strategically placed in the, in the city of Pasco so that it can open up for grants and other opportunities to make sure. That we're on the right track and I just wanna, I wanna, um, congratulate or just to have kudos over to staff. Uh, for doing this kind of work and and the council itself, because this is what a council does. I I want, I want the public to know that, this is a, a, a prime example of what, one of the things that enhanced the, the lives of all these community members around that park. Collaborating with the school district and working together to make it happen and and this is really cool for me to see in the years that I've been here. Uh, it's, it's really, really satisfying to see how this is all coming to fruition and how we're all working together to make this work. And, uh, I will be voting in favor of this and, uh, looking forward to it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, certainly I echo, uh, Mr. Martinez's comments there as well, this is the sort of thing that really does enhance quality of life, no question about that. But I would, I'd just like to follow up with, uh, Mr. Alvarado's comment, um, is that, is that walkability and accessibility to the park is important as well? And if we have walls up, so you only go into busy corridors and you have kids having to walk, um, along our busy intersections to get to parks. Uh, that, 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 that takes away a little bit, I think, from, from the sort of pleasure it has from a community. Um, so I would, I would, I would certainly echo Mr. Alvarado's comments about, about how we can look at making sure that that, that not just location. But flow and access to it are also thought of as we, as we go forward with these, it'd be, I think, um, um, a, a wonderful thing to see as, as part of this. So we can do not just as good as we're doing, but even better, thank you.
Mr. Maloney?
Oh, yeah, that's a lot to follow up on what Craig is talking about and I know I was kind of a little dismayed at when you go down Court Street where we're building the walls on the south side of the development. But like, there's like the sidewalk and then there's the wall, I, I hate to see just like a wall, it looks like you're just going through like a dungeon. I, hopefully our council, when we get together, uh, next year, we'll be able to maybe talk about it. But I love, always like to see trees and a wall, so when kids are walking from a housing development to a park, you're actually going through an area where there's at least. Six feet of grass and some trees and then the wall, it just, again, it's really kind of disheartening to see that, but.
Boulevard.
Boulevard, yeah, especially on the main corridors like Court Street, uh, it's kinda, I didn't think it looked as good as it could have, but that's another topic, but I'm in agreement.
And just to throw a little bit more fuel on there too, uh, just south of those houses is the canal, which hopefully a long-term project would become a linear park. I know that a portion of that further to the west of this has been piped under, I know that's been a long time, hope I see some staff members nodding, so. Linear park connected to a neighborhood park and vice versa, uh, uh, is probably hopefully in the ten or twenty year timeframe. So we do have specific action on the floor, resolution number three, nine, two, zero, uh, did you have other comments, Mr. Ratkai?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, no other comments, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of resolution three, nine, two, zero, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you also, school district, for, uh, working with us on this too, it's, uh, nice to be able to make more than the sum of our individual parts on things when we can. We're done with section eight, no unfinished business or new business, so we go to eleven miscellaneous discussion, Mr. Zabel, you any thoughts?
Uh, a few things, just a reminder of the signing of the Agreement in Principle with, uh, Colville Tribes this Wednesday at, uh, Red Lion. So looking forward to, big turnout for that, uh, we worked with, uh, tribal offices and and have a pretty extensive invite list to a lot of the other local governments. As some of the council members that, uh, had met the tribal council, uh, are aware, they were hopeful of being able to meet some of the other ci- delegates from the other cities and. Ports and things like that, so we have a, we have a great, I think, uh, group of folks showing up. Then secondly, uh, uh, mayor's acknowledged it already, but I did wanna note our, the presence of our new deputy chief. He was sworn in just last week, yeah, in front of a very good crowd, uh, a lot of, a lot of badges and patches from all over the region. Uh, not just Pasco folks, but from all over the region, so the region is excited to see him as our deputy chief and we are as well. And then, uh, uh, note the, um, twenty nineteen Pasco Turkey Bowl. And like Halloween, it's on the holiday, it's on Thanksgiving Day at eight AM, uh, at the sporting complex. And it's a, an adult co-ed flag football, uh, tournament, uh, that is, uh, being sponsored and and organized by our Parks and Rec folks. So and then, uh, last but not least, uh, council member Millen mentioned earlier tonight, the Snake River Dam event, uh. And that's on a Monday evening, I think it's, uh, January thirteenth, uh, six to nine PM, which basically conflicts with the. City council meeting and I, I, I don't know that you need to make a decision tonight, but I, I think council may wanna think about that conflict and what alternatives there might be.
I would imagine, I would imagine a Tuesday could be an option.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it seems to me it would be important for the elected officials of this city to be there if they can be.
So if you could, uh, just maybe make a suggestion to us between, between now and the end of the year for when to do that?
Okay.
Uh, as an alternative that we, that we could figure out what to do here in December?
Will do.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Is there, uh, any miscellaneous discussion by council members, Mr. Alvarado?
Yeah, just a couple of, uh, announcements of a couple of events coming from Watchdog, uh, we have the state active transportation plan, uh, it's gonna be a BFT at December fifth at five thirty. Um, just to learn what the state is doing and be good to keep our ears to the ground, especially with the, uh, some, uh, things that pers- uh, transpired recently. And then, um, on November twentieth, there's also a joint transportation committee here at, uh, at the Pasco Community Program, uh, uh, and Pasco Community, um, uh, building. And that's at one PM, November twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. I did, uh, see a note the other day that the Special Olympics are gonna be this weekend, uh, twenty-second is the opening, uh, ceremony. Seven PM at whatever they call it, Track Happo Center these days, the Trappo Center, I guess. Um, and then, uh, then with the activities obviously to ensue on Saturday and Sunday, so be great if we can support that. And thanks for selecting our community, those folks.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I just wanted to re- remind everyone that tomorrow at four o'clock, the Pasco Public Facility District will be having, hosting a meeting, um, re- related to, um. The aquatic facility effort that they're moving forward on, so, um, I, I hope, uh, members of the public are interested in, uh, showing up and helping, uh. And helping shape the sort of capital improvements that the, uh, city of Pasco might be pursuing, thank you. Showing up and helping uh and helping shape the sort of capital improvements that the city of Pasco might be pursuing, thank you.
And with no other reports, we go to uh item twelve, we do have need for an executive session this evening, uh executive session. Uh purpose is to uh consider acquisition of real estate and also discuss litigation, potential litigation with legal counsel. Overall, it's expected to take about twenty minutes, uh won't be attended by the city manager, city attorney for all of it, as well as the A N C S. Manager for the uh second part of it, uh I know, of course, no action will be taken during the session and after the meeting, I'll reconvene the council. Uh and entertain any action desired and then adjourn the meeting, so if it is eight eleven now, uh the expectation is would be an executive session until about eight thirty one. And uh if we head straight there or do we need a break? Straight, straight there, straight there, so we'll be back at eight thirty one. And we're back from executive session and with no other items before council, we are adjourned, thank you all for coming.